I plan to leave this to the United States of America, continue the public for the same coordination and justice for all. Thank you very much.
That's form.
Make sure that when you're speaking, light is going to turn on, like you, and that's when it's going to be in the Sunday December from May seven.
Lynn, can you pop your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know better. I'm going to appoint Nelson to fill in for Bob tonight, since Bob is not here. I'm gonna have to deal with the girl now. All right, we have a consent agenda?
Lynn, so one of the items on the consent agenda, they have withdrawn their application, so...
Which one?
So that'll be the ultimate bimmer project.
Okay, so that's not, that's off the consent agenda?
Yep.
All right, we can deal with that.
Which one was it, please?
The second one.
Ultimate bimmer.
Oh.
All right, so what's your pleasure on the one thing left on the consent agenda of somebody?
Move to accept.
Second? Jamie, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero.
So, to clarify, we're granting an extension to the Enterprise Rent-A-Car...
Correct.
But not granting any extension to the ultimate bimmer?
That's correct. It's off the consent agenda. We're not doing anything with it. It's gone, just cross it off.
Just wanted to be clear on that, thank you.
Armada Realty LLC, third item on the agenda, continued for review for final approval of a site plan involving the consolidation of two lots into a single parcel, raising of an existing single-family dwelling and construction of a proposed restaurant building with drive-through, along with associated site improvements. The parcels are located at 632 and 634 Daniel Webster Highway, in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquafor Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, and the Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map 6E hyphen 2, lots 6 and 7, is planning board case 2024 hyphen 06. This item is continued from the March 5th Planning Board Meeting. As I understand, Casey, the applicant has requested a continuation to the May 21st meeting?
That is correct.
Can I have a motion to such?
No, make a motion.
Jamie, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Barb. All in favor of continuing to the May 21st with no further notice to butters?
Second. I mean, approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, four zero zero. Colt Refining Incorporated applicant and King Herrick LLC and Evan Realty LLC owners. Continued review for consideration of an amendment of a conditionally approved site plan for a 97,600 square foot light industrial facility and associated site improvements to split construction of the site into two phases. Phase one is proposed to consist of all site improvements and 65,282 square feet of the proposed building. Phase two is proposed to consist of the remaining 31,918 square feet of the proposed building. The parcels are located at 12A Star Drive and unnumbered parcels off Herrick Street and King Street in the I-1 Industrial and Aquafor Conservation Districts. Tax map 3D hyphen 1, lots 2 hyphen 1 and 20 hyphen 1, and tax map 3D hyphen 2, lot 20 hyphen 1. Case Planning Board 2024 hyphen 05. This item has been continued from the February 20th and April 2nd Planning Board Meetings. We have somebody here who would like to speak to this. Give us an elevator conception here and then go into your details.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Planning Board, I'm Jason Hill with TF Moran, here on behalf of Colt Refining, with the applicant. I just was gonna load the...
Please get your mic on, please.
Sorry about that.
You got cut too.
Jason Hill, on behalf of Colt Refining, for this, it's an amended site plan approval for a phase, a phase project. This is approved conditionally in December for the full build, 97,600 square foot light industrial facility for Colt Refining. We had met with you folks a couple, a month or two ago to present the phasing plan, and additional details were requested, specifically what was the, like, the finished ground conditions associated with the first phase relative to the, and relative to the second phase of the site plan. So those details have been submitted, and I'm reviewing some of those right now, tonight, all of the details, but specifically, we have, looking at the overall site plan, you're all familiar with the overall site plan. This is the existing Colt Refining facility, located off of Star Drive. Star Drive is an east-west dead end off of Daniel Webster Highway, which is a north-south road. So we have access to the parcel, these are three parcels that'll be merged, all industrials owned. The, with exception to the existing Colt Refining facility, the two out parcels are undeveloped. They'll be, the three parcels will be merged. Access will be provided via the existing full access drive off of Star Drive and a new access, full access drive off of Herrick Street. The layout of the site plan has not, has remained unchanged since we've met and discussed this project last, but specifically related to the phased construction, the first phase would consist of the build-out of this, the orange building portion, roughly 65,000 square feet is shown on this plan, and the remaining open spa, the future phase two area will be just loomed and seeded temporarily with grass, which includes the future loading dock on the south side of the phase two. Additionally, there's several parking spaces that front on the second phase of the building, which would be, the intent is to install the gravel, like, subgrade, you know, material, and then, but loam and seed the finished grade, and then construct those parking spaces subsequent to the future second-phase development. So I've provided those plans and some details that was requested by the board on the grading and other things. So, the lighting, there was a concern about parking lot lighting of the phase, the parking in front of the phase, second-phase building. With that parking being removed, there's no proposed lighting required, you know, for those parking spaces, and that'll be illuminated in the future as a wall mount, wall pack light will be installed on the north facade of that building. So the landscaping has remained unchanged. It'll be all installed in phase one, as shown on this plan, the shrubbery that's around the perimeter of the parking lot. And then finally, we're asking for a five-year condition for the phasing to allow for the commencement of the second phase to occur within five years of the completion of phase one. The applicant requests a five-year extension from the date of final site plan approval to commence phase two, so that'll be the date, the date upon which you sign the final plans for this project. We're requesting five years to start phase two, as our phasing proposal. Otherwise, we're just in the process of just dealing some final staff comments, including just some departmental comments from DPW, they're minor. The sewer comments, the main concerns have been addressed, which they had wanted individuals, so there's a proposed, some tenant space, some spec tenant fit-up space introduced in this amendment, and we're providing, the demising walls are shown, you know, as the interior lines within the building, those would be tenant, future tenants, prospective tenant spaces. So we had proposed, as a result of some of the sewer department review, we had, and this is why we had to request a continuance from two weeks ago, is that they wanted us to run the sewer and have individuals, individual sewer services to the tenants versus a single sewer service, since this is an industrial use. We have done that, that has been reviewed by Mike Gorman, and so he's approved that design, and there's some, just some final details that he's asking for that I'll, we will follow up with, his regards to some note numbering, typos, and miscellaneous belt and suspenders type comments. So, you know, tonight we're looking, we're seeking a conditional amended site plan approval for this project, and that's, that's it. So, I have additional plans and materials, if you'd like, I can go through them, if not, I'll just open it up to you.
Jason, you've mentioned a couple of times, light industrial. As I understood it, this was approved for warehouse. Are you changing that?
No, it's a light industrial warehouse slash warehouse is the proposed use, so we're not, any of the, any of the tenant spaces are light industrial warehouse uses. The parking has been designed for the square footage of light industrial warehouse use that we're proposing.
And what type of light industrial use are you anticipating putting in there?
That would be anything that's permissible by the Bay zoning district. I mean, it's spec, it's being leased out by others.
Give me a for instance.
I'm not the leasing agent, so you could say, light industrial warehousing could be in some cases contractor shops for certain types of activities, if it's permitted in the zoning district. I'd have to pull out the zoning book of permitted uses, but we're not designing the site for parking and all the other, based on anything that's non-permissible under the Bay zoning district.
Do we have an issue with having approved warehouse and now it's warehouse slash light industrial?
Yes, let me get to that page in our regulations that break down the parking calculation, to see if the parking calc was based off of warehouse specifically? I just need one moment, one moment please.
It's actually probably shown right here, on this table, because this is the site plan in color.
Jason, another quick question. You're cutting off access to King Street, is that correct?
I do have, here's the parking calculation. Is that what we were looking at? Office warehouse, so the parking calc is here, and it's based on the total 97,000 plus or minus being light industrial and warehouse, and we've broken down, and this has been an approved parking calc from the beginning of the project. So what was that question? I'm sorry, Lynn.
You're cutting off access to King Street, correct? There'll be no access to King Street.
The project never has proposed access to King Street.
Okay.
We're proposing to, there's a turnaround easement here in the back, which we're proposing to extinguish.
Okay.
And we're, and we're meeting with the town council soon to memorialize that. In conjunction with that, and we're working with DPW, we're gonna provide them, the town of Merrimack, with a snow storage and flow adjustment for the end of King Street, so they can plow if need, there's a gate there that they have access to. So that'll be dealt with at the town council level. And I'm working with Don Toomala and others on just the finalization of those agreements.
Okay. Barb?
Yeah, because the council's gonna wanna know how those trucks are gonna turn around without the easement, so keep that in mind.
I should clarify, there's no existing road, it's just a paper street.
Right, it's just, but they have access to that area if they need it, to turn around when they get down there?
Yeah, it falls down, no, it drops about 10 feet off the end of King Street, there's like a big, there's a hillside that's vegetated with shrubbery overgrown, so you couldn't physically, you know, without improving that, you couldn't turn around without...
You gotta be able to get a truck through there. So, I know the question was, okay, now this is light industrial, but I remember having some very detailed conversations with the board regarding what the use of this building was going to be, including whether Colt Manufacturing was using the building, and in fact, what hazardous materials might they be using within their processes. Now, I don't know, did I sleep through something? Because all of a sudden now we're talking tenants. My impression was that Colt was always inhabiting this building. Now we have tenants. When did that change?
The plans that were submitted initially with the original application showed, the floor plan showed tenant space. We didn't discuss in detail at the meetings, the tenant space, but I did review the submittal to the board, and it did show that as tenant space.
So how much tenant space are we talking here? Is Colt inhabiting any part of this building?
Yes, so, this describes the, I'm just gonna read this to you, it's from a cover letter that I wrote, and hopefully you have it, it's from March 12th. I have copies of it, if you need it. It describes that. So, first phase, applicant seeks to phase out the project where, I'm just gonna read this verbatim, the 65,200 square feet, including all the infrastructure will be completed, the remaining 31,900 square feet will constitute phase two. So for phase one, Colt Refining will be the primary user, occupying a minimum of 32,500 square feet, with additional tenant fit-up space available for similar light industrial users.
All right, so what you're talking about is Colt is planning on build, on using the large part of that building?
Correct.
And the two half sizes are for tenants?
Or Colt potentially, if they need to grow it. So, 'cause that's all in flux as they're marketing and designing. So those, any tenant space will have to conform with the zoning ordinance, they'll have to go through Mr. Price to make a determination, if it would have to go back to the planning board, because if it has specific, specific aspects of the business, such that it's a conditional use requirement or otherwise, then those tenants, before they gain COs, would have to come before you, that's what we're asking for. But we need to have the building constructed while we're marketing it, and so we're proposing permitted uses, just like you'd, any, like, strip mall retail space that has multi-tenants, and they're unknown who those tenants are.
What's in the brown building now?
The brown building?
Yep.
The existing Colt Refining?
Is that, is that Colt?
That's 100%, I believe.
Colt?
Colt refining and recycling.
Fine.
They're two different, it's Colt, it's under Colt refining, but there's recycling and refining. But it's, I believe, 100% Colt.
Go ahead, Barb.
So then the phase two, so phase one, they're gonna, Colt would occupy a majority of that space. So phase two will be similar, the tenant space will be allocated for other light industrial users, but also potentially occupied by Colt, because in five years, they don't know how much demand, what the growth of the company, we're anticipating some of the use of that in five years. But a majority of this building will be Colt refining, of the full project, and in both phases.
Follow-up, Barb?
Follow-up, thank you, Madam Chair. So, what's, why the length of time for phase two? Five years is a long time.
Five years is the state of New Hampshire statute for, it's essentially where you're protected from zoning changes from a site plan perspective, so that's a...
But your grandfather didn't own a lot of things anyways. What's the business rationale for that?
Because it's...
Understand, we have a lot of people that come back before five years and tell us they're not gonna do it, period, so hence my curiosity.
That's just their timeframe, like, it gives them an actual flexibility, I don't know, I don't think Merrimack has specific criteria on phase, phasing, it's kind of an agreement between us and you. And so because of the state statute, and basically this is a large project for them to undertake, and it's gonna be beneficial to the town and to Colt Refining, we're asking for the five-year, because it'll, it's not really giving the town any additional advantages with regards to regulation changes, because we're already protected, but it's also so we wouldn't have to come back from multiple extension requests from the board every two or three years. And I've done that on other projects in other communities, and I've been successful with that timeline, that's the reason.
Jason, truck traffic? We having 18-wheelers in here?
Yes.
And what's the traffic pattern?
The trucking is all designed to come via the existing truck access...
Yep.
Off of Colt Refining, off 12A Star, off this road, and with, which opens up into a shared loading facility. So all the 18-wheelers will be utilizing Star Ave, Star Drive, excuse me, with exception to delivery.
How do they get out of there?
They turn around, this is like a 150-foot, the width of the loading is large enough to circulate, and there are also, there's a circulation circle here, that's wide enough to do a 180.
Okay.
And so those plans have been submitted to the planning board and the staff, the turning template plans that demonstrate the turning movements.
Okay.
And have been reviewed by the town and their consultant.
There gonna be any access to Herrick Street?
The, for trucking, no. Fire access, yes. This has been designed, and we actually, as part of the recent submittal I made, as a response to the final fire department comments, is I softened this radius here.
Yep.
It used to look like, it was tighter.
Yep.
And so to make it more accessible, I touched this radius and this radius, and to make a cleaner turning movement. But all of the, the office traffic for the development, for the new development, will, majority of it has been designed to come through Herrick Street, although it's open to both Star and Herrick.
Jamie, Nelson, questions, comments?
Yes. I'd like to talk about the green space there, which is phase two, and it says light industrial. Where does it show the grading and the planting of that? Because I couldn't find what was gonna go into that space, it's colored green.
Yeah, we're not proposing to plant it with shrubbery, because it's, within five years would be removed, and it faces the railroad, there's no public, so there's the temporary grading plan, I'm gonna zoom out, which has been submitted to the town.
Okay, Nelson, what page are you on?
So this is gonna be a, just a seeded area, loam and seed, and it's designed to grade, a majority of it grades to the south, those are contour lines. It'll flow into the system, the multiple drainage BMPs.
Where does it say that? I guess I'm having, I'm looking at C4-1, I don't see any indication of what those lines mean, I guess one of them is probably a match line.
So this is a contour line, and they did it in a dash, because to indicate that was a phase one temporary grade line, and so that's a 132 contour. This is a 134, there's a high point up here, coming off of the north side of the building.
Uh-huh.
That's a brake line, what's called a brake line, it's not, and it jives with the brake line on the road right here, so there's a, this water all flows south, that falls below this, it's designed to, and this water, any rainwater runoff would flow north to the catch basins that are in the parking lot, which are collected and infiltrated.
And the water that goes south, where does that get picked up?
Yeah, there's a trench drain on the next sheet, actually, I didn't, it's shown here.
Yep, it's shown.
Oops, sorry about that. So there's a...
There you go.
Okay, so there's a trench drain here, that runs basically the whole gutter of the, so that water will flow from the grass on the, it'll flow down...
What page are you on now?
C4-2. And that'll flow, from here, if I trace a water drop, it would fall down straight, and there's a trench drain here, that's connected to a catch basin. All this drainage system will be installed for phase one, so there's gonna be more drainage than is needed for phase one, because we're putting in all of it.
So what's the surface finish when you're left?
It'll be, okay, so this'll be gra, the phase two building footprint is gonna be grass.
Where does it say that on the plan? Because I couldn't find it.
One second. So here's the site layout plan.
It says loam and seed.
And then over here, this is the future phase two loading dock area, where I'm saying install select materials, loam and seed, that means put in the gravels underlying it, and loam and seed that zone, so that'll be, this will all be a green space, that's graded to flow into this, it'll be stabilized with vegetation, and the water will flow. So the system will be overdesigned for the first phase, because it's designed for the full build, and there'll be an acre of grass that'll be converted into building, you know, for phase two.
Where does the grass go? I can't tell from my plan.
Maybe I should go over to the first plan, it shows it better. Okay, so the, so you can see this green, this is really showing the first phase, so that the green to the right of the building is all gonna be grass in the first phase. And then when the second phase gets built, we're gonna convert these parking spaces up here, we're paving those parking spaces, creating those. We're gonna create the sidewalk extension in front of those. This will remain a green strip between the building and the sidewalk, and then here's the outline of the phase two building in orange. And then, underlaying this green, you can see there's like a hatch for concrete, that'll be converted to concrete in phase two. And this is just, this line is an underground drainage system, so it's under, so that's what's gonna happen.
I can hear what you're saying, I can't find it on the plan, I guess that's my only issue.
Okay, so on sheet C3-1, three dash two, I was looking for a pan option. So here's the plan view, where I have phase one over here, there's the outline of the building. Here's the outline of the phase two building. Here's the loam and seed, which is meant to cover this, and then I also have the parking area, install select materials, loam and seed, and I've hatched that out. So there's the specification you're looking for, and that continues to the next sheet, where a similar note is added, loam and seed, and install, this is for the building footprint area, and then here's the future loading area, where I'm specifying to install the select materials. And it's hatched with a dot hatch, I should've put a perimeter on it, it's hatched out with this dot hatch here, so that's where we're specifying. And then for phase two, I created an inset on the, on sheet 3-2 over here, it's called Phase Two, where it shows the finished grade, see the finished condition with the loading dock concrete, and I'm identifying the phase two building area and the demising wall, and the parking spaces that are being created for phase two. Similarly, for the grading plan, I have a grading, on the grading sheet, I have a grading inset that shows the grading for phase two. Let's look at that, here that is. So here's the phase one grading, we just discussed, and then I have my phase two detail that shows the grades around the perimeter, foundation for phase two, and then the grade basically between the driveway, just the tie-in. So those are the two construction details that we've developed to define the scope of work for grading and site finishes.
Those will be part of phase one.
Yes.
Those will be part of Phase One, if you realize that, yeah.
And then the lighting.
Get your CO.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I guess it's there, I just couldn't find it.
Okay. Casey, do you have anything you wanna add here?
Uh, so you asked about what light, uh, industrial means, and that's, that's not specifically listed as a use type in our parking calculations. Um, it just breaks it, like, the one that Jason used in the parking calculation is under warehouse and storage. So one space per twelve hundred square feet of building.
Okay.
In the office, I think I broke out.
In office, yes, that's correct, and then separately, the office space.
And the parking we did, I'm sorry, Casey, was for the full, it wasn't only Colt Refining, it was the ninety-seven-six.
Mm-hmm.
You know, same with the traffic study.
So if there was some kind of manufacturing use proposed, for example, in one of the units, that is a more stringent parking calculation. Uh, and that's something that would need a waiver from the Planning Board if that were to, if that were to be proposed in the future. So that, that would come back to the board.
Okay. What's the will of the board?
Okay. So, we've resolved the lighting, you said the lighting was resolved somewhere.
Yep.
The lighting for Phase One.
Yeah, the building, we're not, we're not, the question was about the lighting was whether or not we were gonna illuminate the parking that was gonna be built in front of Phase Two. And we're not, and that, that was the last meeting's question, and we've addressed that by the twelve spaces in front of Phase Two, we're not building in Phase One, therefore, there's no lighting requirement. Those will be lit in Phase Two as designed with a wall pack light that's on the Phase Two building, which will illuminate those areas.
Is there pole lighting out there?
Not on the, not on, there is, yes, not on the, um...
On Phase One?
Not, there is on Phase One, yes. The parking lot is, is completely illuminated, in accordance with the town Merrimack standards. Yeah, no waivers for lighting.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve this phasing plan, if that's the, I've gotta get the wording right.
On, on page three.
Yeah, thank you.
Top of page.
Page, page three, she said, here we are. Oh, yeah, Madam Chairman, I would make a motion to find that with the proposed conditions of approval, the applicant meets all applicable regulatory requirements, and further, to grant conditional final approval to the application, subject to the recommended changes, con, conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated April twelfth, twenty-twenty-four.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Jamie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jason.
Appreciate the, uh...
Good luck with it.
The approval, thank you.
And just for clarity, what the board voted on tonight was with the conditions as drafted by staff, um, and that the board did not make any comment on the, the, I, I don't quite understand, but the five-year exemption that you were talking about. Um, so that's, that's unrelated to what the board just voted on.
Yeah, I understood it to be a five years from the time we, they go, get-go. All right?
Yeah.
My understanding, yeah.
Yep, good, thank you. I understand. Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
All righty. I am, five on our agenda. Keith Curran, applicant, and Gleason Company LLC owners. Continued review for acceptance and final approval of a site plan to construct a seven thousand six hundred and fifty-square-foot manufacturing building with associated office space and other associated site improvements. The parcel is located at sixty-three Turbine Way in the I-1 Industrial and Aquafor Conservation, elderly housing overlay, and Town Center overlay districts. Tax map, five D hyphen one, lot five hyphen one. Case Planning Board two zero two four hyphen O two. This item is continued from the January sixteenth, February sixth, February twentieth, and April second Planning Board meeting. So we should have everything in order now. Go ahead, introduce yourself and tell us what you're gonna do.
Good evening, uh, further recorded Eli Leno, attorney from Bernstein Sure, joined by Keith Curran from Bowler Engineering. Uh, the board is, as, um, Madam Christensen mentioned, rather familiar with this process. We've vetted this substantially, and at the last meeting, the application was accepted as complete, and waivers were voted on. The thing that remained open was that the applicant, we understood that this property had been developed previously, and the question was, had this been reviewed by the Planning Board? Or was this pre-nineteen sixty-five? So, um, I believe you have the documents most likely in front of you. We can add them to the board if it's necessary, but we have aerial footage. I think one of them, that airplane one, I think is from the nineteen thirties, but I couldn't find a concrete date on that. Um, and then...
It's been around for a while.
Right.
I think we can grant that.
It's fun to look at this one without the golf course on the other side of the river, et cetera. It's a interesting old photograph. So, I'm a little disappointed that Chairman Best isn't here tonight, because his colorful language on this was that if I could show that this was before nineteen sixty-five, he would quote, "Eat that sandwich." And I don't know what that means, but I'll never find out.
Well, I will eat that sandwich then. Thank you for your persistence in satisfying our curiosity, and this, this makes this much easier for us.
And as I said last time, I appreciate that this board takes this seriously, cares deeply about Merrimack, and asks reasonable questions that...
And the river.
And the river, absolutely, for which the town's named. So we were able to come back, um, show when this site was first developed, explain what those pre-existing, uh, non-conforming, impervious surfaces were. And one of the things the board did discuss last time was that, as, as designed, our site certainly improves the, the condition on the, uh, site of the drainage. So I think, at this point, certainly Keith is available to answer any remaining engineering questions, but I, and I can answer any questions about the timing.
I think we went through all of those at the last meeting, and I think the only thing that was outstanding was, what was here when? And I think everybody's had a bite of that sandwich, so.
All right.
Um, Casey, anything we need? Not from the, uh...
Yeah, I, I, like you said, I think that last remaining question, um, was just a matter of, um, how long ago the site was developed, if that predates our regulations.
It certainly does. Uh, questions from the board, comments?
Yes.
Yes, Nelson?
I have a couple. One, um, at one point in the review of this plan, I had asked about, uh, intrusions into the fifty-foot, the fifty-foot setback, which is in present regulation, regarding setback with impervious surface from the river. And I asked if that could be removed. And I don't, I thought we were in agreement on that, but I haven't seen the evidence of it yet.
No, so we didn't revise the plan, but yes, we, it's like about twenty-fifty square feet. I showed the figure last time, I can show it again, but this is a small little section where there's existing pavement within the fifty-foot from the river. So that pavement can be removed, and it can be loam and seeded, that area.
That's part of your present?
Well, we didn't change the plan yet, but yes, we, we've talked about it, and we, we can, we can do that if...
It, it can be one of the conditions on this approval, okay. That was one thing that I wanted to have, get a little bit of the, of the impervious ser, of the pervious surface back for the river protection.
Good. Anything else?
Um, I had one other question on, um, the comments from the Merrimack Village District. It's on page three of the staff memo, and it's item number nine. And there are some comments from Merrimack Village District that I don't think we've addressed here. Um, the business of the location of the water lines and, uh, and the fire sprinkler system, and the requirement for the water main being shown, uh, are, are all of those to be addressed?
No, they are addressed. I met with them in person before the last hearing, and the plans that were submitted before the last hearing addressed their concerns. And I gave them a, a cop, also a copy.
Is the staff happy with that? This looks like, was this inserted by the staff?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that is true. Uh, we just, we don't delete comments like that off our memo until we hear it straight from MVD, but, um, I do know that MVD meets individually with the applicant, so I'm, I'm sure that is the case.
Okay, so they will be addressed if they're not yet.
But as noted, they're addressed, and like I said, we showed, you know, we showed, uh, we added the hydrant, which was one of the fire department comments also, that was, came in late. And then we showed that fire protection line and so forth. So, like I said, I met with them, and they told me exactly what they want, and that's what we updated the plans that you guys have, showing that.
I remember talking about the hydrant.
Yep.
And that you had shown it on the plans now. But I didn't see these particular things addressed that are in the staff's memo today, but...
Yeah, these are all, like, Casey mentioned, they've been sitting in here a while, like, they have, they have been addressed. So, I mean, you guys can reach out to them, and they'll tell you, Casey, if you want that.
Yeah, usually we'll just get an email from MVD, just saying that they're all set. We, we, all we need is just that one-sentence email. And we, and we can delete them, yep.
Okay, he says it's okay, and he says they say it's okay, and...
I mean, even if they're not, they, they're part of your drafted conditions, so as long as you stick with the staff recommendation, they'll, they'll get addressed, even if they're, they're not somehow, but...
Thank you. I have nothing else, Madam Chairman.
Lynn, I don't know if in previous hearings, if it was ever opened up to the public. Uh, if it hasn't, I recommend just saying it for the record, that this is a time for the public to testify. I, I don't believe there's any abutters here, but, just in case.
I will open the public hearing. Anyone here would like to, to speak for or against this? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. That covers my sandwich, doesn't it?
I would note that one of the abutters is here, but...
But he did not wish to speak.
Right.
That's all that matters. All right. Board, what's your pleasure? Jamie's, Jamie's looking for it.
You wanna do it, or you want me to do it?
Sure, I'll make a motion to find that with the granted waivers and proposed conditions of approval, the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements necessary, and further, to grant final approval, conditional approval to the applicant, subject to the recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated April twelfth, twenty-twenty-four.
Got a motion by Jamie, second by Barb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero.
Thank you.
You're good to go.
Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
All right. Zoning administrators report. Anything else for us?
Uh, yeah, I believe at your last meeting, you asked staff to just kind of have an update of administrative approvals that were approved since your last meeting. So there, there were three that have been done since your last meeting earlier this month. Uh, one of them being an approval for a home occupation, one being a tenant change approval, and one being a site alteration approval.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. That's good information to have. Approval of minutes. Do we have minutes?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
We do. And, uh, let me just see, hold on, I got something.
We got something, huh?
I got something, yeah. This is strange. All I gotta do is find the minutes. Here they are. Page, uh, yeah. On page two of the minutes, these are the, we're talking about the minutes of April the second, twenty-twenty-four.
Yep.
On page two, the second line has a strange sentence, well, it's, it's all one sentence. Robert Price explained that staff had requested the applicant to seek a continuance for two weeks to permit the wastewater department time to complete review and comment on a revised set of plans that were submitted in response to their original concern of the plans lacking in too much detail. Now, it's that part about lacking too much detail kinda bothered me. There's some, there's a word missing here, and I don't know what it should be.
Double negative.
Yeah.
Uh, we can revise that sentence so it reads a little bit more smoothly.
Uh, yeah, to whatever was intended to be there. That sentence, by the way, is repeated in the memo today.
Oh, really?
We just got, yeah, so it's in there twice. But, uh, it must've been serious about it, but I could not figure what, what was the problem with the plans, when you say it's lacking in too much detail? It's lacking, lacking in detail.
It's not lacking in too much detail.
Yeah, I think it was... Get, get rid of the too much.
Yeah.
Lacking, lacking in de, in detail.
Yep.
Well, if that's, if that's what there was intended.
Another one? Or is that it?
That's my comment on the minutes with those, with the correction to whatever it should be.
So you're making a motion to approve as amended?
I will make a motion to approve said minutes with that one change.
And second?
Second.
Barb, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero.
Stained.
Oh, I'm sorry, four zero one. Barb, it's stained.
That was a tommy.
Okay.
Oh.
And we are just past seven fifteen. You want to adjourn?
Somewhere.
Thank you?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, it's silly, you don't need a motion to adjourn, you can just state it. But that's all right. We're done.